All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Special meeting of the council. That's your role call?
Yes, actually you have all of your counselors by name. You have Counselor Antipas, Counselor Barber, Counselor Grimm, Counselor Moravcik, Counselor Nalt, Counselor Morton, Counselor Perazzati, Counselor Watson, and yourself.
Thank you.
Mayor Flax.
Chuck, could you read us? Chuck Stevens?
Can you read us in the slogan flag? Just start, you know, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recognizations, awards, and memorials. We have some presentations tonight. The first is from our local legislators. I think Chris and Joe and Heather are here.
Hello.
How are you? We have some recognition. First, I would like to say I brought you all as counselors that are going to be leaving something from the Senate, which is a State of Connecticut pin. So I'll give it to you all for your service for the town of Groton. And we appreciate your service and hope you will find something to do extra special on your Tuesday nights. Forward.
Thank you, Heather.
So, you're welcome.
Thanks.
I have one more. I didn't get it out of its made in China package, unfortunately. Sorry.
Thank you. I like this.
We can have this to commemorate your time on the council.
So did people leaving? Did she say commiserate?
We have a special recognition for a counselor who has spent nearly three decades serving the town of Groton. And it's an official citation, and I was wondering if Harry Watson could come up to the podium. And it was signed today. We walked it through, and it basically just fell apart. Sorry.
It was not made in China, it was made in Harvard.
Oh, that just flips it. Now we can see the frame.
Don't worry about it. I can remember giving a speech here one night, whole time with a microphone like that.
Well, this is actually bittersweet for me because Harry was one of the first people that I got to know when I ran for office in 2001. And he did doors with me and sort of showed me the ropes. Harry has been so well thought of over the years that he's been crossed endorsed by both parties at times. And when we talk about volunteerism for our state and our country, Harry Watson definitely comes to mind. And we wanted to give you just a small token of our appreciation. And it's a General Assembly citation. Again, it was walked through today because I actually had the number of years incorrect, and it's 27 years. So it reads, "We are hereby known to all that the State of Connecticut General Assembly offers its most sincere congratulations to Harry Watson in recognition of your 27 years of service to the town of Groton, serving as counselor and mayor. We also want to share our gratitude for the countless hours that you have volunteered in service for the community, and we wish you the best of all in your future endeavors on Tuesday nights, and thank you for your dedication for the town of Groton. And the entire membership extends its very best wishes on this occasion and expresses its hope for your most continued success." And it was signed today by the President Potam, the Speaker of the House, and the Secretary of State Denise Merrill. And it was put in by the three of us as your legislators. Congratulations. I also have an extra special pin for you. I'm all about the pins. And this is a special Senate pin that very few get, and I wanted to be able to give this to you tonight because you well serve. And it has the State of Connecticut emblem on the bottom. And last but not least, I wanted to present you with a State of Connecticut flag that you can fly off your boat when you're fishing on Tuesday nights or at your house on Tuesday mornings. It's a bid one, so you can be reminded of all the service that you've done for our town and for our state. And we are, you know, very proud to have worked with you. I am personally in my time. You taught me so much, and I look forward to the next things that you're going to do here for the town of Groton. So, congratulations tonight.
Thank you.
We do have the Secretary of State ones.
Okay. So next is Secretary of State's office.
Senator Summers?
Secretary of State.
Okay. So Joe and I are here to present on behalf of Denise Merrill citations by our Secretary of State. Scott Bates, one of the deputy secretaries, was going to be here tonight, but he was called away, and he's currently on way to Washington, D.C. to deal with some business that's necessary in D.C. So these are for everyone who is leaving. On behalf of the Secretary of State, she would like to recognize the timeless dedication to the people of our community for your many years of service to the town. So I will pass them out as we have them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And then we have one more presentation from the council. Harry, it's for you.
This is Paul.
Thank you.
Everybody do it right here? I guess we can do it right here. I guess. Up at the podium?
Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Will we wheel you over there? Oh, yeah. Let's do that.
Where's your front? Going to call you step and drag. That's very nice. Thank you, Doris. Very nice.
Hi, Harry. So I'm fortunate enough to have followed you. You're here 27 years, and I've been on for nine years, and you've been a guiding person, a wealth of knowledge, somebody who I turn to, I think everybody turns to whenever we have a question. You know, I know that your contributions to the town go far beyond what you did for council, and that's saying a lot. You know, you substitute teach in town, you were involved with the Shell Fish Commission. There was countless things that you did that makes Groton a better place because you were involved. And we didn't really know, you know, what to do because we think you'd have a lot of probably Groton stuff. But we have a plaque here that commemorates you on the council from 1990 to 2017. And there's a quote by Thomas Jefferson that Deb was instrumental in picking out, and it says, "In matters of style, swim with the current; in matters of principle, stand like a rock." And we thought that that represented you very well, so.
Well, I can say a few things.
Okay.
Because I was thinking about this on the way over here tonight. I realized how long it's been. My wife and I have a 26-year-old daughter that was born my first year on the council.
Wow.
I can remember Town Hall being downstairs at the other building down the bottom of the hill. There wasn't aquatic planes. We have new schools. City and the town both had part-time health departments way back then. Town didn't own a hatchery. The Marriott wasn't there. All the things that have changed, all for the better. It's been a good ride, and I have a quote that I'm going to read when I get back up there. And I don't like to be outdone sometimes. This is beautiful, Deb, for picking this out. Thank you all much for recognizing me because I'll have my last meeting. So, thank you. And my wife, who is here, Kim Shepherdson, has lived through all of this. Thank you very much for that, although.
All right. Next is receipt of citizens' petitions. And this is the portion where citizens can make comment. They need to leave it to five minutes or less, and what's being discussed should be pertinent to the town. We have one person signed up, and it's one, Kevin Trejo.
Kevin Trejo, 536 Hanacasa Road. Let's repeat ourselves. Thank you to all for all your years of service to this town. I know it's bittersweet for some. And Harry, the only thing that's missing tonight is George Edwards for you. I'm sure he would have loved to be here right now. I knew George very well. Didn't he get you involved in politics in Groton? We'll talk about that.
He actually got me to Groton. George Edwards got me to Groton.
Yeah. Okay. What I'm actually here about is tonight you're going to be reviewing the Appointments Committee rules and regulations. I'm having a little problem with the process of what's going on. You have an appointment tonight that you're probably going to approve, and this is not about the person who's going to be approved because I think the person is a very good person. But it's the process that seems strange. October, the seat was filled. Yet the person put an application in on October 20th to fill a seat that was marked as filled October 17th. Went to the council appointments beginning of November to be approved to get tonight's approval. No one never knew, that I know of, it wasn't on the website, it wasn't posted anywhere, that there was a vacancy even. I just got a brand-new, updated list, a colored list that people understand of expirations and gone over, showing the vacancy. So from October 17th, when it was filled, to November 17th, nothing has been posted online or anywhere that a seat was available on this commission. It doesn't look good to me, in my eyes, to the town people when we're looking for people to go on boards and commissions. It seems like someone just got ram-rodded in a position instead of having it posted out to the town for people on anywhere, Republicans, Democrats, unaffiliated, to put their name in for a position. So I have a little problem. I mean, the normal steps were done according to the rules properly. Went to a committee, the committee approved it, went to the appointments, it all got approved, but it never got posted anywhere. That has me concerned. So if you're going to approve a new policy, something's lacking. You know, I can get into more depth, and I'm trying to keep names out of this and everything else, but it's wrong. But it does start in the clerk's office because everybody has to fill out a cap publication there, and then it's forwarded. So somewhere along the line, something was missed or overlooked. And I bring this to you on your last night and to any of the new members of the new council now. This process has to be clear and upfront. If not, it's a waste of time. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else like to sign up for citizen petitions? It's Dr. Grinear, and then Joe.
I have to speak quickly because I'm so hot in here. I'm all dressed for the football game.
Go Falcons!
It's going to start in 15 minutes, but who's counting? Well, I just wanted to, I actually prepared some comments, and then the COW was canceled. So I realized my big moment in the sun was over. Then I saw there were citizen comments, so I figured I'd comment. By the way, 496 Noank Road. I always wanted to say that, like I'm a real resident. What I really want to say is, I wanted to thank the council, this council, for what I consider to be an amazing number of accomplishments that have occurred over the last two years. We are tomorrow having a meeting to really get going with the building of the new middle school, Groton 2020. Without this council unanimously supporting the Groton 2020 plan, that vision would never take place. My understanding is we're going to start digging in May, and this school is going to come to fruition, and I cannot be more thankful than right on the heels of that, there'll be two other magnet elementary schools that will accommodate more of our students, and that's a remarkable accomplishment. The other thing I want to say, especially since Senator Summers and Representative Dela Cruz and Conley are here, I consider myself privileged to be part of Team Groton. I went to the Capitol twice, at least as part of that team, once with Counselor Nalt, and we argued in front of the legislature that Groton was being short-changed. And then, of course, we went, Mayor Flax and I and John Burt, and made a strong argument to the governor again that Groton was not being treated fairly in the whole budget process. And it has all, you know, knock wood, much of that has come to fruition, but all of that is really a reflection of the unbelievable hard work that you put in as citizens of this community. And on behalf of the children and the schools and the Board of Education, I just want to thank you. This was a remarkable two-year accomplishment. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe?
I was going to echo the superintendent's words. I'm dressed for the football game, too, and I'm melting in here. But I'm ready to go. I got elected with you guys a couple of years ago, and again, I thank you guys for everything you've done for me, Mayor Flax, everything I went through and our family went through, you guys and Deb and Harry, you guys supported me 100 percent. Harry talked to me a bunch of times after saying that I was working my way up and I was improving as a counselor, and he gave me a lot of words of encouragement early. And a lot of stuff I took up to Hartford, I learned from you, and I really appreciate everything that you've done and respect you a lot. I just, I couldn't sit here and not say something about all you guys. So I thank you guys for everything you've done, and I did enjoy working with you all those times. And I'm going to go watch Fitch beat Massick right now.
Right on.
Hopefully, so let's make that happen. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Joe. Would anybody else like to speak during, so we go to responses to citizen petitions, comments, and concerns? Anybody? Okay. Someone like to move the consent calendar? We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, extension? That passes nine to zero to zero. Go to Communications. Counselor Antipas?
You know, I can't think of any off the top of my head. If you, I'll listen.
Counselor Morton?
I have nothing to report.
Counselor Barber?
I have nothing to report.
Counselor Perazzati?
I'd like to just take a minute. I had written a letter to the editor of the day back in October. Apparently, it wasn't good enough to be published, but I'd like to take a few moments to read it out loud for anybody who is a voting member of the town of Groton. My question to start the article was, what is the problem with Groton's government? To all registered voters of Groton, within the next month, the Charter Revision Commission will submit their recommendations to the council. The council will then have the final say as to whether or not the draft presented will actually go to the voters next year. The town may have an encumbering governmental process, but it's one based on checks and balances while representing all districts. The council and the RTM have reduced town operating expenses by 5.5 percent in 2017 and 1.6 in 2018. Keep in mind that the council only controls 1/3 of the town's budget while the Board of Education controls the remainder. The Board of Education has a state-imposed minimum budget requirement that limits their ability to reduce the school budget. So again, I ask, what is the problem with Groton's government? The problem is we have a revenue problem. Relying heavily on state funding has been dicey and unreliable. We need to continue focusing on economic development, not restructuring our town government. Build the tax base, streamline our schools, strengthen our community ties between districts, and in doing so, we will create the synergy that will allow our town to grow without dependency on our state revenue. Our town charter is not the problem, revenue is. And I signed it as myself, Groton Town Counselor, Huntington Road.
Thank you. Counselor Watson?
We got an email from Natalie Billing about the proposed changes to the personnel appointments rules. That's all.
Okay. Counselor Grimm?
No, I got the same email and nothing else.
Counselor Nalt?
I have nothing to report.
I attended the sale meeting on the 20th of November and the seat meeting on the following Wednesday.
Very good. So I just want to make a statement before. There's no appropriate time to do it since the end of the meeting is adjournment, there's no new business. But I just wanted to thank the citizens of Groton for allowing me to serve nine years on the council. It's been my honor to serve. You know, I think that we're going out on a high note, and I think that, you know, we accomplished quite a bit. As Dr. Grinear said, we unanimously, you know, we had the largest school referendum in state history passed by this council. We created a Charter Revision Commission, which I think was one of the reasons that we got into the council to begin with two years ago. And I wonder, and we're going to talk about it tonight, but I wanted to remind people, it's not whether you like the final revision. You know, there was a commission assembled of Groton residents that represented every district in the town, who spent 15 months working on this document, and depending on tonight's vote, it may go to the voters to decide. We'll have to wait and see what happens. We hired a very capable town manager, and I think I heard somebody say once before that we're just doing our job, but we weren't just doing our job. It's hiring a town manager and hiring somebody who can, you know, bring this town forward. And I think we're leaving with a very, very capable town manager. And we made a commitment to drive economic development. We hired some new people. John Reiner was hired. Paige Bronk was hired. They've been invaluable. We kept their budget whole so that they could do a few things. As one of the few towns left in Connecticut with a separate planning and zoning, we're working to combine them. And we were developing tax and commit financing districts, which have worked in other towns like Madison, and will help in getting our economic development kicked into gear, especially with electric vote. Hopefully, the next council will drive economic development as well. I'm sure they will. I also wanted to make sure, I think Deb touched on it, it's understood that town spending was down, Board of Ed spending was down, but taxes went up, and it really had to do with the revenue that was cut from the state legislature in Hartford. But thanks to the efforts of our state senators, legislators, Board of Ed chair, city mayor, superintendent of schools, and this council, which restored. And then finally, I'm hopeful that the incoming council will hold themselves to the same ideals that they were vocal in holding us to. With an entire council of Democrats, they should conduct all business in front of the camera. No backroom caucuses, complete transparency. By law, they can caucus whenever they desire and conduct all town debates in private, but they were, again, very vocal in making sure that the eight Republicans in charge did not do their business in backroom meetings. And I'm hopeful that they'll do what they urged us not to do. So hopefully, they'll be there. I want to congratulate the incoming council. It's great. You guys are going to do great, and I wish you the best of luck. So that's my communication. Clerk of the representative town meeting?
Thank you. The representative town meeting will be meeting on December 13th at the Groton Senior Center at 7:30. This will be their first meeting of the newly-elected RTM, so the body will adopt temporary rules, and then they'll elect a moderator, and they'll also have an opportunity to, if they so choose, to act, well, veto only on the ordinance to designate planning and zoning as planning and zoning commission and to abolish the zoning commission. So they have until the 27th, I think, of December. It's 45 days from the enact, but when you passed it on the 8th. So that's what they have.
Can I ask one question about, is it, can you clarify, from the election, there's supposed to be minority representation in each district? Did it end up that way, that there are, in every district that's there, there is?
There is at least one person.
But is that with minority? I don't understand. I wanted to just find out.
Yeah, I know. We have a town attorney's opinion because there was such a question on this because our town charter actually speaks about nomination, not about minority representation, even though they call it the titleist minority representation. So it caused Counselor Antipas and I and a newly-elected member for the RTM to wonder what's going on. So we asked for a town attorney to give a clarification, and it really boils down to our town charter is in violation of state statute. You cannot dictate elections in your charter. Only a statute can. So when you have a seat of five members, you can nominate five members to run. What can get elected is determined by minority representation, which is Connecticut general statutes. And so a five-member board, four from one party. You know, we never had this type of situation before, so this is why we've really tested the bounds of what's right and what's wrong. So going forward, if we don't have an RTM, we won't have to worry about it.
So on minority representation, if it was going to be with the council, it would be 6-3, correct?
Yes.
Right. So on a five, it's not 3-2, it's 4-1?
No, it's, that's, it was a real curiosity to me, too. You'd think it's a 2/3 minority representation. And the statute is nearly 2/3, except with a five-member board. And it was explained to me by Jamie Spillone, who was the Deputy Secretary of the State when I first became town clerk, because I was like, how can this be? There must be some mistake. He said, nope, the only reason why we were able to pass this legislation at the time in the legislature was because we adopted a formula, I'll put that in quotes because there is no formula, it's just, this is the way it is. A five-member board would have four from one party. And he said, because most boards and commissions throughout the state are five-member boards.
Okay. Thank you.
And they didn't want to give up their supermajority.
Clerk of the council?
Sure. So you've all received the letter from Natalie Billing, and I'll read it into the record because she asked me to. It's addressed to me. Dear Mrs. McCauser, if the council's considering a change to the appointments policy tonight, would you please share this email with them? If the policy is changing and removing the 60-day wait period for applicants to ABCs, which is, you know what ABC is, who are unaffiliated, perhaps it would be best to take the political parties out of the process for all applications and reappointments. Since applicants are registered with a party to have, to be recommended by their party or wait 60 days if the party doesn't act in a timely manner, it actually gives unaffiliated applicants an advantage if they don't have a waiting period. Even with the town committees acting quickly, depending on when the person applies for the ABC, it may be weeks or months or two, a month or two, before the town committees meet next. To avoid putting applicants who are registered Republicans or Democrats at a disadvantage is why the 60-day wait for U's was adopted as policy by this previous town council. The policy recognizes there is a built-in delay for party affiliation participants, applicant, excuse me. The advantage to an unaffiliated applicant only arises when multiple people apply for the same position at about the same time, which isn't particularly common, but it does and has happened. If a U and a D and an R apply at the same time without the waiting period, the U could be considered and possibly appointed before the D or the R-affiliated applicant even has a chance to be considered by the council. If the council objects to the 60-day wait period for U applicants, perhaps the most efficient and most fair process for all applicants and reappointments would be to remove the town committees from the process altogether. The Democratic Town Committee has no objection to the town committees being taken out of the process altogether. We would like to still receive copies of applications from Democrats who apply the same position at about the same time, which isn't particularly common, but it does and has happened. If a U and a D and an R apply at the same time without the waiting period, the U could be considered and possibly appointed before the D or the R-affiliated applicant even has a chance to be considered by the council. If the council objects to the sixty-day wait period for U applicants, perhaps the most efficient and most fair process for all applicants and reappointments would be to remove the town committees from the process altogether. The Democratic Town Committee has no objection to the town committees being taken out of the process altogether. We would like to still receive copies of applications, but, from Democrats who apply, please. We would, uh, question the rationale for a policy that creates a disadvantage for applicants affiliated with a party. Thank you for your consideration and concern and suggestions.
Thank you.
Also, also, something from my office, for each of you, which are appreciation certificates, because all of you have, have served more than you know. So, uh, from, from November two thousand eleven to two thousand seventeen?
My third month.
Yeah. But you're correct, you actually serve more than, more than you know. Sweet.
Oh, I know.
Well, I have a who's-who list. Thank you. That you have. Yeah, I know, you guys can take those, too. Well, no, well, I could reuse them, right?
Thank you.
For your children. I think I do have them all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. A pleasure. That's great. Thank you.
All set, Betsy?
Rich gets Jim.
Good evening. I just wanted to thank the council for hiring me and bringing me and my family to the community. We, we greatly enjoy it. We love this community, and it's been a pleasure working with you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Jim. Uh, any department hits here?
None tonight.
Okay. Uh, Personnel and Appointments Committee, Chairman Watson, is there any?
Uh, yes.
Great.
Okay. Uh, we met on November eighth, and we called order at six-thirty. Um, myself, Counsel Morton Morosich, and the town manager and town clerk were present. They approved the minutes of October by a three-to-zero vote. Um, unfinished business. Uh, there was a withdrawal of an application to the Permanent School Building Committee, uh, which solved a dilemma for us, uh, because we had four applicants and three openings. Um, and we interviewed the people for those three openings the, uh, the month before. We were waiting to interview this one person, Bill Robage, and, uh, he withdrew, so, um, we voted three to zero to, um, recommend appointing Christina Post, Douglas Manfred, and Jamie Giordano, uh, to the Permanent School Building Committee. That was unanimous. Um, we had a discussion about the appointment policy, and we approved the, the changes that we've been working on for some time, um, in a three-to-zero vote, uh, which also included the, uh, the two forms. There's two Forms C and D. We made some changes to that, which were part of the appointment process. And then the, the committee recommended, uh, that the council consider, uh, three different ABCs to keep or remove, which was the Permanent Personnel Appeals Board, Neighborhood Revitalization Zone, and the Fair Red Commission. New business, Jean-Claude Amois, was interviewed for appointment to the Shawfish Commission. Uh, he did state he didn't belong to any conflicting organizations, which is a, a new question that we ask, or we have been asking. Uh, we voted unanimously to, uh, to, uh, recommend appointment. And then there were three reappointments that were recommended three-to-zero, and they are reappointments to the Permanent School Building Committee. And as you heard tonight, um, that's an important committee right now, they're going to get rolling. Uh, Robert Austin LaFrance, Michael Doyle, and David Russell. Um, they adjourned at seven oh five.
That's it. Thank you. Chairman Antipas, no rules?
No meeting, no report.
And, uh, we didn't have a committee at the hall, so there's nothing to report there. Going to new business, and we're going to suspend Town Council Rule seven B to consider an act upon twenty seventeen zero two five three, the Charter Revision Commission final report.
Okay.
We received, um, a copy of the final report, um, from the town clerk last week, I believe it was. And, um, this council has the responsibility to either accept or reject it before our tenure is done. We, uh, we have until the end of the month, and today's the twenty-eighth, so, um, so that's what we're up against. I have a couple of questions, and John, and the attorneys, maybe you guys can answer. Um, is, is, go ahead, Dean.
Point, yeah, point, yeah, somebody has to move to suspend the rules.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Great.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules.
Who motioned?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Thank you, Council. Um, so, I had received a couple of various resolutions, and I just want to make sure I understand. We either accept it all or reject it all. Is that correct? Like, we can't say we're going to take, we can't, like, say, we're going to do that, we want that, we want that.
Technically, the statute provides that you can accept in part and reject in part. Frankly, with the, the number of items that are in this proposed revision, we would certainly suggest that you be careful in doing that, because you can choose to say, oh, this one, this one, this one, this one, not this one, this one, this one, and they might not all mesh in the end. There are, there are a lot of moving parts, and I think on the whole, you know, those moving parts went together. You know, there, there were talks about, um, whether there's a referendum or a Board of Finance, or, um, moving the, eliminating the RTM, and I do think those things sort of went, went together. So while technically, you can go through kind of a rundown and say, you know, this, 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 um, I think it would be very, very difficult to do so and to be sure, you know, that you weren't missing something, or that what remained actually worked together.
Okay. And just for clarification, before we start our discussion, um, the referendum itself, can we, can it, can we say, um, your first question, eliminate RTM and, and have a referendum? If that passes, then you go, or is it, again, is that, I know it becomes pretty complicated, but?
I think it becomes very complicated. Technically, again, can you have multiple questions? You can have multiple questions, you know, but, but, again, I, I think that would, um, it would be very complicated.
Okay. I'll open it to the floor of the councilors.
Bonnie?
I just like to say, I feel very strongly that we need to get the charter revision to the voters. The Charter Revision Commission worked very hard, and, um, there's only seven RTMs in the state of Connecticut: Fairfield, Greenwich, Darien, Westport, Branford, Waterford, and us, out of a hundred and sixty-nine towns. The only one with a town council and an RTM is Groton. This was meant as a temporary transition away from a real town meeting. The representation is redundant. My husband was on the RTM for two years and chair of the finance for one year, which is a pretty important position on the RTM, and he was never called by anyone in our District Six. Why would he, when anyone can email at any time all nine town councilors or the town manager for answers? I believe we shouldn't make the Board of Finance represented by district, but since there was a tremendous request at the public hearings for this, it is a compromise that I, I could go for. I don't think that we should have a four-year term so we can just leave this off the ballot, and, um, I think we should hold it in, uh, November of two thousand eighteen, uh, the time of the regular election to keep the costs out.
Thank you. Karen?
Yes, I will join, um, Counselor Nault in supporting sending this to the voters. I really agonized over this decision. There were some things that I would have liked to have seen in the charter revision. Specifically, I would have liked to have seen triggers, um, on the referendum, and also minimum voter turnout. However, I think, um, it would only take one, um, budget to pass that was duly influenced by special interests before the voters would wise up and realize that they need to be involved in what goes on in their town. So, um, that's not enough incentive for me not to support this. I also feel that having served four years on the RTM, that system is broken. I don't feel that it truly represents, um, the, everyone in the town. And I also was very concerned about a statement that I heard repeated numerous times at the public hearings, that, um, individuals felt that having, um, a Board of Finance would deny representation to city residents. That disturbed me until I looked at the current situation. Right now, you have two districts, District Two and District Three, that, um, cover the geographical area assigned to the city. And between those two districts, you have ten representatives to the RTM. With a total body of forty-one people, you currently have twenty-four percent of the membership of the RTM is, represents city residents. If you have a Board of Finance comprised of seven members, and again, two members of that seven represent the two areas, the two districts in the city, that representation has been increased to twenty-nine percent of the total board. So as far as I'm concerned, the argument that, um, city residents would be losing member, um, representation, I don't think holds water. So I will support sending this to the voters.
Diane?
When we first vetted the volunteers to sit on the Charter Revision Commission, at least one person expressed the, the desire to serve so there would be no changes. At first, when this volunteer was voted in, I thought, that's not a good idea. Why on earth would we choose someone that did not want change? Looking ahead, this was probably the best move we made. By having someone on the commission to challenge, dispute every idea, it made the process more in-depth. While it may have been at first seen as stalling the process, it actually, it was actually giving more weight to the actual outcome. By questioning and challenging every aspect of the charter, these recommended changes have been dissected and scrutinized, given the ultimate vote to move forward with the change more merit. If I am not mistaken, there were over a hundred votes on specific changes of the charter. Is that right, Bob?
Very close.
It was about a hundred? Okay. The majority of the commissioners voted for very specific, excuse me, specific changes after all the dissecting and scrutiny. Kudos to all the commissioners for putting in their due diligence and understanding how important these changes are for our community, community. In closing, I support bringing this charter revision to the voters.
Thank you. Greg?
Yeah, not to continuously repeat what everybody says, I too echo the sentiments of Counselor Morton, and Nault, and Barber, and bringing this forward to the, the voters, and let them decide, uh, and all the hard work that the commission has done. Um, so I support bringing this to the, the voters.
Yes?
Rich?
Rich?
Yeah, I can support bringing this to the, to the members also. My disappointment was the fact that the non-residents can't vote, and I wish that would have been put into the charter, but unfortunately, we lost that battle this time. And, uh, I, I just think that the Charter Revision Commission did a wonderful job. I think Bob Frink, uh, did a lot of research on it, and he should be given a, a credit for the, the work he did, and, yeah, he should be given one of those. And, uh, I want to thank all the other members on the Charter Revision Commission who, uh, put their time and effort into it, and, uh, their questions and, and everything else that went into it. And I can support this, specifically so it can go to the people. We should have them make the decision.
Thank you. Harry?
Yeah, I pretty much, Counselor Perazzati supported how I feel about this. I'm going to vote against it. Um, in your letter to the editor, it never got published. Um, I do have a question for the town attorney, and that is, um, we vote, you need five votes, right? That's, that's the deal here. We need five votes to pass. Yeah, there's five people already, are in favor of sending it on, so it's a done deal. But, um, what, does the next council have anything that they can do, or do they have to follow this edict brought up by this council to put this on the ballot next November? Is it, is it done after, if, well, it is going to get voted?
Sure. We've actually been asked that question, basically whether or not the incoming council could rescind or modify the decision.
No, that's my point.
And, um, after reviewing the statute, our opinion was, no, they can't modify that decision, because the language in the statute, in the statute is mandatory rather than directory. And in part, you know, you're tasked, the statute tasks you with making a decision within fifteen days of receiving the report. Even if you could even think about a rescission, but by the time a new council comes on board, it's outside of that timeframe. If we look at that timeframe as being mandatory in nature, meaning you're bound by those fifteen days, you can't go back and, you can't go back and change it. So while there certainly is a, a theory of law and a general premise in law that, um, you know, a, a new council or new legislative body isn't bound by, by its predecessor, here the statutory framework, you know, just runs against that, so.
That's interesting. That's interesting. Thank you.
Rich? So you're saying we can't reconsider this decision?
Correct.
Bonnie, do you want?
I'm going to make a resolution if anybody wants more discussion.
Dean, do you want to say something?
Yeah, a few things. It's, uh, one, I understand and appreciate the work and the thought that was put into this. I'll preface my remarks by saying that. This was, this was not done in any way, shape, or form lazily or incompetently or anything like that, but it is a product of a committee of eleven people. And I, I will say that I think it was a mistake to put people on the commission who came in with an agenda, whether it was pro-referendum or RTM right or wrong, it's my RTM. I would have preferred something a little more neutral. That said, those positions probably did drive a lot of the discussion, and that's not a, necessarily an unhealthy thing. Um, but the law does require, not only, if we want to, that we establish a commission, but that the commission's product then come to us. And so that, to me, means we are the second opinion. If you were to get a medical opinion, and you didn't like it, you wanted a second opinion, how would you feel if the doctor said, well, the first doctor said, so I'm going to go along with that one? I think it's our job to consider this independently. Again, appreciating all the work that went in. It's just too important, and it's also required by law. I'm not going to touch on every single thing, but it occurs to me, the original Board of Finance was a seven-member group, very well. And then we were concerned, because the elimination of the RTM meant no representation whatsoever. And it's funny, different ends of town always think that they're going to wind up on the wrong end of the stick. Um, I wonder what the information actually, the stats actually show historically. But, so then, the final report says, all right, all right, seven members, each member to be elected by district. That's because we happen to have seven districts. People here remember when we had nine districts. I remember when we had eight districts. We have seven districts now. We could have six, we could go back to eight. Are we tied to seven districts? The provisions for why we have districts and how we come up with the districts in the draft are stripped. But it does say, well, the council can create districts, basically redistrict as it sees fit. No criteria whatsoever. So how do we come up with these districts, which will exist apparently only to elect members of the Board of Finance on a one-to-one basis? And the districts right now are not even, and that's reflected by the representation in the RTM. District Two has, comes in first place for the lowest number of voters, at twenty-seven sixty-one. District Four comes in at the top with forty-four sixty-one. That's a sixty-one percent difference. Are each one of those districts going to have one member on the Board of Finance? Because if so, that's not really truly representative. I know it's always an approximation, but that's pretty stark, I think. Um, also, if the body is to have minority representation, and each party runs somebody in each district, so it's a head-to-head in each district, and one party has a great year, like this year, and takes all seven districts, well, minority representation says, congratulations, only five of you may serve. Which two of the winners are told they can take their seats? Can you do it by number of votes? How do you do that when you have different-sized districts? So I think that there are some mechanical problems with that, uh, that we're going to run into. Um, the Board of Finance continues to be The Board of Finance continues to be in the draft, and more or less an advisory body, which takes us back to, why don't we simply appoint, the way we appoint other boards and commissions, a Board of Finance? You can actually control the qualifications of the people who are on there, and they can advise the town council, the town manager, on financial matters regarding the town. Let's see, a couple of small things. I'm a little concerned about the mayor to be removed by six counselors, not eight currently, town manager to be removed by six, not seven. Why do I say that? Once you have minority representation, a majority will have six seats. Well, so basically, the majority party could have it as its own agenda, the removal of a mayor, the removal of the town manager. I'm not really so much worried about the mayor as I am about the town manager, which currently requires, currently requires seven votes out of the nine. There are some micromanagement provisions that I think are in here. Great ideas, I still think that they're micromanagement, telling the council specifically how, how it should conduct its business. If these should be, if, if anything, they should be policies adopted by the council, not enshrined in a charter. The, on the referendum itself, this is, this is kind of the type, the heart of the whole thing, and let's not kid ourselves. I voted in favor of establishing a commission, because I thought that there were some unanswered questions that were, arose from the last Charter Revision Commission. And I thought, maybe this is a way to get into those, because some of the accusations, and there were accusations, were that, well, something was going on in that commission, and my favorite position was not adopted in the new charter, so there was some monkey business. Fine, then let's have a Charter Revision Commission, and we'll air all that. So, that was my, that was my hope. But I am also aware that one of the reasons, I think one of the chief reasons for putting this thing together, it was a movement on the part of quite a lot of people, was to see whether or not we could adopt a revision, having a budget referendum. That was the driver, and having, having, going in with that one, something had to go. And that's the RTM. The Board of Finance frankly was an afterthought. I don't say that, that it was slapped together, I'm just saying that the budget referendum was there to take a shot at the RTM. Why? Because the RTM, as it's been said, is dysfunctional, and our system is dysfunctional, our minority system and all of that. And what has been the chief, the chief complaint that I've heard? Because I've said to the council, "Not the RTM, you'll forgive me." The chief complaint has been, gosh, every time the town council takes something out, the RTM puts it back in. More rarely, the town council appropriated money that the town, that the RTM then takes out. I don't have 2015 for some reason, but 2018, back to 2010, I have the RTM coming in always, except in one occasion, just under or a lot under the town council's budget. In one instance, in 2014, fiscal year 2014, the RTM added a little less than a couple hundred thousand dollars, probably something the council cut and the RTM put back. So, at least going back to 2010, I do not see a pattern of large-scale monkey business. If anything, the large movements have been to remove money the town council appropriated. And if the goal of a referendum, as I've heard it said, is to make sure that the budget falls more in the line, that is, lower, then I don't see how you can claim that the RTM hasn't been doing that. I guess the request is that it do even more of that. Now, on the issue of the referendum itself, the proposition is better that a couple of thousand voters, and remember, we're not even asking, we're not even proposing, that there be a minimum participation. And we know darn well it's going to be ten, twelve, maybe fifteen percent on a good year, of people who show up in a May election, and then repeatedly show up. You're not going to get the same crowd over and over again if it fails the first time. Fine, in theory, sure, a couple of thousand people has to be better than nine counselors and up to forty-one RTM members, has to be. Except note one thing, note one thing. How many times have we raised issues concerning the flow of information? Are we getting the straight dope from the town manager? Is the Board of Education's budget and the format that's understandable? Is the city's budget, when it makes its request for appropriations, is that understandable in a format? Should we have joint meetings between the council and the RTM so that department heads can make a joint presentation? It's all about the flow of information. Why are we so concerned about the flow of information and getting the straight dope and understanding? I'll tell you why. Because this thing is complex. And I don't claim to have superior knowledge over the next guy, but I was elected to do a bunch of things, including do this. I do the work, so you don't have to. And how do we know that people are not doing the work? I think this was raised in one of the minority reports, and I'm open to a challenge on this one. How many times has this book, because it costs money to copy, how many times has this book been ordered? How many people come in and buy this? How many people download it? Download it, okay? So, who's looking at this? Who will look at this when it's a budget referendum? I will want to know if this thing actually goes to the voters and is, and is adopted by the voters. I want to know, when people show up in May, how many people prior to a referendum vote bought or downloaded this? Okay? That's what I want to know. I'm not dinging people. I'm, I am not claiming to be superior in any way. I'm simply saying, like I said, we spend the hours so that people don't have to. I myself will not be looking at this thing in detail next year. Why should I? I'm not a council anymore, I've got other things to do. So, so I don't know what you're going to get when you get a referendum. You're going to get a vote, you're going to get a result. Can I understand what is meant by the process where we keep having a repeated referendum that apparently go on, open-ended? But don't worry, we'll have an interim budget. And then when the referendum comes in, positive, thumbs up on both, town and Board of Education, then we can set the tax rate, the mill, the mill rate. I just, I just have a problem with this. I have a problem with the fact that currently, I'll back up a second. The council has taken little shots at the RTM, the RTM has taken shots at the council. How come you guys don't do this? How come you guys don't do that? The council's been accused of getting in the weeds. We accuse the RTM privately, of course privately, we've accused the RTM of not getting into the weeds enough. Oh, all the work is done at a committee, and then the rest of the RTM rubber stamps it. They don't look at the budget the way we do. So, we see the RTM as an, oh, by the way, and, and a, and not a very useful system. But consider, the charter that we have now produces a budget, doesn't please everybody, that's for sure, doesn't only please anybody, but it produces a budget on time, every year, in time, to get bills out, to get cash in, because by July and August, we're running out of gas. Unless you'd rather we bank a whole lot of money, which is another topic for tonight, to, to cover that, to cover that. We've got to get tax bills out. The town needs money, otherwise the cops paycheck bounces. So, the system works currently. It involves three major bodies, the Board of Ed, the council, and the RTM. And then there's a town manager as well. The people always gripe about differences of opinion. Let there be differences of opinion, there's a reason why there are different authorities in town. Let them have different opinions, let them have different priorities. We may want to cut something out, guess what, losses, the RTM gets to put it back in if they want to. Who's more representative of us, or the RTM? We don't have to go there. The system sets that up. It's like arguing who's more important, the House of Representatives or the Senate. So, I've got problems with the claim that the system is broken. The system isn't broken, as far as I'm concerned, it can stand improvement, it's far from perfect, and so is this. What people don't like is they don't like some of the products. I don't think we're going to like some of the products if we go to the other system. I think we're introducing problems, we're introducing questions. I think we're going to be here again with another Charter Revision Commission, if this is adopted, easily within the next ten years, as people go, "Oh, my God, what did we do?" And I don't have to go into part, portions thereof, except reject. I am rejecting the entire thing as unworkable. It is not, does not present a distinct improvement in any way over the current charter. Would I like to revise the charter some way? Yeah, I would, but not this way. I cannot support this.
Thank you, Dean.
Yeah, I just have, my question is, either direction, so if, if this is voted forward, does it have to go out to a vote within a certain time?
It does. The statute provides for, I believe, fifteen months after that vote. So, it could happen in the next regular election, or you could set a special election.
Okay, so, I would say that, I'm going to be all over the place here, because I have a lot of thoughts about this. You know, this is really serious stuff for our town. It is big changes for a big town, I said that a couple of months ago. There's no question that the commissioners on the charter worked very hard, and put a lot of time into what they were doing, but I'm going to tell it like I see it. I think some of it was personal. I think that some of the counselors came in, as other counselors have mentioned, with preconceived notions of what they wanted, and we're looking at it more, more for an outcome that they wanted, rather than trying to figure out a story and doing what's best for the town, although I think that they probably thought they were doing what's best for the town. You know, we were, we had, we had mentioned to the coun, to the commissioners a couple of times, that there's a lot of stuff, a lot of changes, and a couple of the commissioners came back and said, "There really isn't that many changes." And there are a lot of changes. And, you know, I think that there was an opportunity here for the charter commission to come back with not as many changes as they did. I think that throwing everything into the pot and having it, and getting all these things up created a little bit of chaos. And, and, you know, we all know that people don't like change, so if we're trying to change the town, doing so by changing a lot of the charter isn't going to get that accomplished, in my opinion. I think that, you know, one of the issues with the RTM that was told by the commission, told to us, was brought out several times, was their attendance. And I just find it, I find it hypocritical that there wasn't a minimum turnout required for a referendum, that you're looking at, you're, you're saying that, you know, forty percent of the people of the RTM, or whatever it was, that, that didn't show for meetings, and that you're looking at them, at not allowing, that there's no minimum voter turnout to vote on the, on the, on the referendum. And so, you're, it, to me, I would, I would have to have the same thing, I would have to have some kind of, one of the things that was a must for me was to have a minimum voter turnout, that it couldn't be fifteen percent, or ten percent, that it had to be some representation of the town. I think that, I would like to see change. I think that there's room for change, whether it be reducing the members of the RTM, but I would agree that adding, adding a referendum and keeping the RTM would not have worked, it would have been too much government. I think that along the way, the process got a little lost. Again, this is just my opinion, that this is something for the entire town, every corner of the town, and we have a responsibility to govern for the whole town. And so, for me, I've said all along that my decision was going to be made on whether I thought it was a, first of all, it was legal, which we know is legal, but that it, that it was a, it was sensible, and, and treated everybody respectfully, and didn't give anybody a benefit over another person. And so, for that reason, you know, I, I will reject it, but I would encourage the next council to form another commission, and to start and try to work it out. And I would encourage one of the other counselors to, to, who have said that they're going to vote for it, to rethink their decision, because it's a, like I said, it's serious stuff, and it's big changes for a big town, and, and it needs to be a little bit more And, you know, it just finally, there's, there's people on both sides who had said, "Oh, you know, everybody who came to the public hearing last time was saying, 'Don't put it through,' but everybody who came to the public hearing on the first meeting, they were all for a referendum." So, and, you know, you'll find that being up here in the council, and seeing who turns out the public comment, and who speaks, can vary, but it often does not represent the whole town. So, I'll just give that warning, but I can't with good conscience support it. But I do appreciate the work that was done on the charter, and I think that there's lessons to be learned for the next one, so.
Rich?
Yeah, I'm going to pour my vote on this, too. If we can't reconsider this in the next, with the next council, I feel that, you know, we should have them at least decide whether or not they want to have another Charter Revision Commission.
Bonnie?
I have a question for the attorneys. If I make a motion, should the motion include the question?
No, the motion should not include the questions at this time.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Charter Revisions recommendation as submitted by the current Charter Revision Commission, with the exception of the provision in Section 3.3.2 that would change the term of office of town council member from two years to four years. The election shall take place in November 2018 during federal elections.
Do we have a second?
Second, so moved.
What's that?
It's a federal election. Oh, well, election, state election.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Deb, I'm, I'm back, Deb. Betsy?
I just, you know, I, maybe this is out of place, but I just couldn't stand it any longer. You know, the RTM is very misunderstood by not just the town council, but the RTM themselves. The RTM is actually the most powerful body in the town. They have not only the last say on the budget, but they also can and should enact legislation. They can, they can enact ordinances and resolutions, all on their own, and make the council act on them. And if the council doesn't act, then there's provisions for what happens, including going to the voters. So, that's the most powerful body, and no one, no one knows that, except the charter.
Well, I, I just want to say, Dean, you were talking earlier, and you were saying the whole council, when you were talking about some of the things, I don't think that's necessarily true. I think, you're certainly, some of the things are your opinion, and Betsy, when you're talking about the council not understanding the RTM, I don't think that that's true at all. I think that, I think there is an-
I just heard-
Yeah.
-this council that, you know-
You know, I think that this council took great pains to try to come together with the last RTM, and try to make, try to work things together more, and try to figure out how the budget process could go better. So, I, I don't, I don't think, I mean-
But it's not their only job.
Understood.
That's all they ever do.
So, Diane?
I just want to say, after the long and hard work that they did, I think it's only right that it goes to the voters, and if the voters turn it down, then they can revisit it again. That's just how I feel.
Any other comments? We have a motion in a second. Okay, go ahead, Deb.
I read, I read my article earlier, I don't really have much more beyond that. I've always said from the very beginning where I stood on this, I have to agree and reiterate as far as what Mayor Flack said. Changing our government is a serious decision to make. I cannot say that strongly enough. So, with that being said, I still hope that people make the right choices for our town when you make this vote.
Mary?
Yeah, I'm just going to, I'm an RTM fan, I mean, maybe reduce the size of it, but there's only so many RTMs in the state of Connecticut, I've heard from one counselor, but there's only one Groton in the state of Connecticut, too. And Groton is such a diverse community, I'm really afraid if we change things to what's proposed, that one or two of those communities, or three of them, might get left out in the whole process when it comes to, when it comes to government and budgets and all that sort of stuff. So, I just want to say that we are a very unique community, we're very diverse, and, and with the RTM system that we have, at least everybody has their say and they're representative, and they can bring that to the RTM, so, and the RTM is very important.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other discussion, are those in favor?
What's the motion?
The motion is to pass the document as presented, but-
With the exception of-
With the exception of the four-year term for counselors.
And the election in November 2018.
Yeah. Are we good? Okay. Are those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed?
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? So that fails. I think we're done there. Move on to twenty sixteen zero one four nine, review of the town council appointment policy. Harry, do you wanna?
Yeah, let me read the resolution.
Oh, hold on.
I'm sorry. Are you reading a resolution related to the charter?
Oh, we have to-
Okay.
I'm just concerned that typically this body acts by-
Rejecting, right?
Resolution.
Okay.
So I, I would just suggest that now that you have the motions, that you act in your normal-
Resolution rejecting in total the proposed amendments to the charter, whereas on November sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Charter Revision Commission submitted to the town council its final report with proposed amendments to the town charter. And whereas the town council has reviewed and considered the proposed amendments to the town charter, and per Connecticut General Statute seven dash nine one nine D, must approve or reject proposed amendments in total or in part, and is hereby resolved that the town council rejects in total the proposed amendments to the town charter. I so move.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? That passes five to four. We're good. Uh, Harry, move on to this.
Okay.
Are you doing two, I'm sorry, two zero one five?
We are doing zero one four nine.
It's the next thing on the agenda.
You with me?
Okay. Say, "Resolution approving a revised town council appointment policy for boards and commissions. Whereas the town council appointments policy was last revised effective March seventeen, two thousand fifteen, and whereas the personnel appointments committee and committee of the whole of the town council have considered a revision to the policy, now therefore be it resolved that the town council adopts the town council appointments policy as attached. Said policy to be effective immediately." I so move.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Harry?
I know that we got a communication from, from Ms. Billings. I think we worked pretty hard. I think what is proposed here is better than what we had before. I think it's, it's worthy of passing the way it is, and maybe the next council can consider changing it again. But I think we've made positive progress towards a good policy. So I think we should vote for it and pass it.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie?
I have a question about the points that Kevin Trejo brought up. Could you comment on that? Because I don't really understand what-
I don't have all the numbers, dates, and everything. That, that concerns the appointment of one particular person to, that was recommended by our committee. I don't have all the dates in front of me, whether they're, I'm not sure exactly how to answer that question. We're, we're passing the policy here, whether that appointment fits the old policy or the new policy, I think is a separate issue.
Well, is this new policy going to present an issue with something like that falling through the cracks?
No, I think it addressed a little bit more fairness for unaffiliates to, to, to become members of boards and commissions. That was specifically. And there's some other things we've changed. We changed in the, for instance, we're asking for comments from the chairperson for a reappointment. And we've also added something about whether a person belongs to a conflicting other organization for whatever, whatever. But I, I think it was mostly to try to make it more fair. So unaffiliates don't sit around so long waiting to get appointed. And I always go to, I've been saying this right along, but the most important statement in the entire policy is on the four point two point one, and I've circled it, is the job of the committee is to appoint the most qualified citizens. I, I think that it's separate, and I think we're gonna probably talk about that after, Bonnie.
Okay.
Anybody else? Dean?
Yeah, I said it the last time. I'll reiterate it, and I think it was in Natalie, Natalie's letter as well, which is that though I wear the party hat, or party chair, I always had a problem with making people who happened to check one box or the other on their voter registration card, running them through the, through the committees. I think people should have a choice of either saying, "Yeah, I want, I want the parties imprimatur," or not, rather than making it a fixed, a fixed feature of our appointments process.
I, I think what we're saying is if an unaffiliate applies for a board or commission through the town clerk, that they don't go through the committees. The process is, the committees are informed, yeah, we got somebody that has applied for this, and oh, by the way, they happen to be an unaffiliate, but that's all.
Right.
That, that, that's what we have in here. Is that correct, Betsy?
Yeah, and I, and I'm not against, I'm not against the steps taken in this, in this revision, not at all. To say, "In the future, I personally, I don't speak for the party, we haven't taken a vote on this, I personally have a problem with that, that's all."
Yeah.
The only other comment I wanted to make, because through experience, it seemed as though, in some cases, by the time the two parties submitted their recommendations, it was almost to the point where the unaffiliated were waiting almost ninety days just to get in front of us. So that's kinda where we were trying to find a balance of, you know, here, give the parties their sixty days, the unaffiliates have their sixty days. In those sixty days, you know, they have the opportunity to come in front of us. That's kinda where we were noticing at times ninety days was a really long time to find somebody qualified who wants to volunteer, who wants to be part of our, our system. And, you know, that's where we were kinda like, how can we find a balance in between the two? We weren't necessarily thinking one way or another, like, oh, we are trying to take something away from the parties by moving these people forward. Yes, I can see Ms. Billings' point. Just means, you know, obviously, what's coming out of the clerk's office has to be, you know, pretty on time and, you know, making sure that that stuff gets to the right council and the right people at the right timing. But, but that was really kinda where we were trying to determine a, a better place so that the unaffiliates didn't have to wait ninety days in some cases to actually just get heard. And then it would be another thirty days before they'd actually get approved through the council. So it just seemed extremely long at one point.
Carrie?
I, I think one of the issues here that Mr. Trejo spoke to when he addressed us was, I think you have a situation where the town clerk is probably the one person who knows up to current minute who is in positions, who's resigned, what positions are open. And I think administratively, you get some lag time between when we update what's on the town's website. So I think the issue is, I, I think that the concern is that there needs to be some way to get the information out when there are vacancies that become available. There needs to be some way to let the public know. Otherwise, the perception is that there are applications coming in for positions that not everybody knew was, are even open. So I think that it's more of a case of, we have to just make sure that we get, you know, as, as much information accurately portrayed on the town's website.
Rich?
Yeah, I think that, that situation was one, and very, and a lot that we developed, that we processed. And if, if one fell through the crack, it's unfortunate. And I think that both the town clerk and the new appointments committee will look into this to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And I, I don't think it's the fault of the procedures that we've, we had, because I think we, we pretty much nailed those down good. It's just that things fall through the crack, and, you know, these things happen. And it happened only, only once in, in a while. So I, I think we all did a good job, and we ought to commend the clerk for the fine record that she keeps in maintaining this, these positions.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero.
Just, in regards to this, we actually have a new form. So just, we wanna make sure that the form is pretty important, process, learning tool. We just make sure that the right people get those new forms and use them. Just makes our process a little bit easier when you're in line.
Greg, can you do twenty seventeen zero two one five?
Sure. Resolution authorizing the town of Groton to enter into a mutual police assistant compact with participating municipalities. Whereas section seven dash two seven seven A of the Connecticut General Statutes authorize municipalities to enter into agreements for mutual assistance whenever a chief executive officer of a participating municipality or his or her designated determines it is necessary in order to protect the safety and well-being of his or her municipality. And whereas the participating municipalities must meet the terms of the assigned compact when requesting the outside assistance of personnel and equipment, now therefore be resolved that the town manager, John Burke, is authorized to enter into this mutual police assistant compact with other participating municipalities. I so move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion on this? Seeing then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. John, should we go to FYE twenty eighteen budget discussion, since Cindy doesn't have to stay on? All right, why don't we do that? Twenty seventeen zero two six three, FYE twenty eighteen budget discussion. And this is a resolution concerning FYE twenty eighteen excess state revenue. Bonnie, you wanna read that one?
Resolution concerning FYE twenty eighteen excess state revenue. Whereas the adopted fiscal year ending twenty eighteen budget included a five million dollar reduction in anticipated state education cost-sharing revenue. And whereas the final adopted state budget did not reduce ECS funding, and it is anticipated that additional state revenue will be received in fiscal year twenty eighteen. Now therefore be resolved that the town council agrees to put anticipated fiscal year twenty eighteen excess state revenue up five million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand in the general fund. So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. So, John, I know that we agreed to put it all into the general fund. But I thought we had also agreed to change wording, change wording to have them, have the general fund reflect at least an eleven, eleven percent.
Yeah, and that's what that, that first resolution had it going to eleven percent. The next one would actually deposit the money. The policy would be changed by, the policy would be changed by the first resolution.
Oh, I see. Okay, okay. Gotcha. Go ahead, Eric.
Basically, we're just saying where we're depositing the money for the time being. And when we talk about it on the debt policy, that's how we would distribute it. But, but we gotta, we gotta put it in our accounts, basically, what this resolution is about. Is that correct?
The first one sets the policy, and the second one would dictate where the money goes.
Is there, we don't have to do it in a certain order, do we?
No.
Okay. So do you wanna comment on this at all?
I just wanna comment that as the money stands from the state now, I'm comfortable with the eleven percent. But if anything goes on worse with the state budget and they do come back at us, my preference would be to have flexibility and go with the ten percent. It's hard to predict what'll happen. For flexibility, I prefer the ten percent. It's still making an improvement.
And that's the other resolution.
The other one. In terms of money, I'm fine with that.
Great.
I mean, I think you might always feel that way. I mean, if your goal's fifteen percent, I mean, I think time now is to start marching toward that, so. You should set it at eleven.
So we're talking-
Harry?
We're, we're talking about the next resolution now, right?
Right. I'm kinda mending it both together. I'm fine with the money going all in there.
So this, this particular resolution where, that was stated and seconded, is just stating that the money would be deposited into the general fund.
I'm comfortable with that.
Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Let's go to twenty seventeen zero two seven three. Rich, can you read that one, please?
Two zero one seven zero two seven three, debt policy and management fiscal practices. Resolution increasing the general fund's unassigned fund balance, whereas the adopted FYE two thousand eighteen budget included a five million reduction in anticipated state education cost-sharing ECS revenue. And whereas the final adopted state budget did not reduce the ECS funding, and it is anticipated that additional state revenue will be received in fiscal year two thousand eighteen, and the fund balance is expected to increase at year end. And whereas the town's debt policy and management fiscal practices read that the town shall maintain an unassigned general fund reserve maintained in an amount equal to at least seven and three-quarters percent of annual general fund expenditures. And whereas the town and the AA two bond rating from Moody's Investment Service and the town's unassigned fund balance percentage is below the median thirteen point six and the mean fifteen percent of the AA two Connecticut municipalities. And whereas due to the anticipated increase in revenue and increase in fund balance for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, now therefore be it resolved that the town council amends its debt policy and management fiscal practices and increases the general fund, fund's unassigned fund balance to the amount equal to at least eleven percent, with a gradual increase to a minimum of fifteen percent of the annual general fund expenditures. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. So, John, you've expressed that you would prefer it to be ten percent.
As I say, stand, I'm comfortable with eleven if the state, if nothing happened. But for flexibility, what I hate to do is set it to eleven and find out if the state's gonna pull any money back during the year. And then it would not look good for our bond rating to have to readdress that policy and reduce the amount to ten percent.
Diane?
My question is, what's that one percent? How much money are we talking?
It's a little over a million, one point one, one point two, somewhere in there. It's about one point one, one point two million.
Isn't the, like, with the, if, with the amount of money we're depositing in there, excuse me, knowing that we have to put one point, we may have to give the schools back, or the new council may have to give the schools back one point six million, it still leaves you a three hundred thousand dollar padding to the eleven percent. Is that correct? And, yeah. Greg?
Yeah, and I guess with the similar communities having fifteen percent for that bond rating, I think I saw somewhere, I think Cindy wrote, that if we do get one downgrade, one level downgrade, it's worth about two million dollars in our new school funding project.
About closer to four.
Pardon me?
It should be closer to four. Closer to four million.
Closer to four million. So I think it is important to try to move toward, you know, what other communities have.
Yeah, I'm just going to the ten, 'cause I need to understand this completely before I vote one way or the other. How does that, does that lock the next council's possibilities? I mean, I don't know whether we need to. Does that, does that money put away and locked up? Is that money-
Oh, no, no. It's just more appearance sake, that if you set it to eleven, and for some reason, something happens at the state and you have to reduce it to ten, you can do it. It's just, it doesn't look great to the-
So what my, my point is, is this one point five, one point eight million, whatever the, the money that may or may not, we may or may not be obligated to give to the Board of Education, does that put this money in a drawer? We can't do that, or the next council can't do that?
No.
Yeah, but it'll be, there's plenty of money there for the school, and, and it sounds pretty sad that we're gonna have to probably do the one point six for all indications. Either way, either way, that's safe. And that'll be dictated by law, too. That MBR should be out this week saying that.
Okay, so, so, so that issue should be resolved, depending on whatever comes out of-
Either way.
-the Hartford or whatever else. And your proposal is, is to, is to, is to go to ten instead of eleven here, which is whatever it is, one point one, one point two million.
Only 'cause I don't trust the state. Eleven, as things stand, eleven should be fine, but I like to have a little flexibility. It's not gonna gain us that much with Moody's for the, for the- It's not going to gain us that much with Moody's for the 10 versus the 11. Putting the money in the fund balance, that's the more important piece.
Yeah, I've seen the document that Cindy's office puts together for these bond rating agencies, and, you know, they look at grand list growth or not, and all these other indicators, I suppose. I can remember when we first started this, and I've got my plaque to show that I'm a historian, I guess. But we started this whole show with 5 percent back when Jane Doherty was mayor. The policy was written way back in the '90s. And I've always been a proponent of pushing it up, because if you're going to say $4 million bucks on the bond, money's at school. It's crazy not to do it, so I'll leave it at that.
Bonnie?
So you would rather we make a modification to this resolution in 10, but you still want it to increase to 15 if we can?
Yeah, that's the goal. Yeah, we definitely want to get it to 15.
It's right as 11. Harry?
I'd like to make an amendment that we change the 11 percent to 10 percent.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion, Dean?
So 11 to 10 is a precaution.
Right. And because if we, for some reason, something happens, if the state went to reduce it, that would hurt us more to have to change it back.
Well...
It doesn't help us that much. Obviously, it's just good practice to increase it, but it doesn't help us with the Moody's rating that much.
Right. So but 10 to 9 is being even more careful. But 9 to 8 is even more careful. Now, the state and what they've given their track record, almost anything is possible. If you wanted to be really, really, really careful, you wouldn't adopt any policy like this at all. So I'm not in favor of budget. It takes...It's a Herculean effort to get where we are. We've got hot iron. Let's bang on it as hard as possible. Get this thing into shape for the 11 percent. You're not going to get this other opportunity, notwithstanding the resolution that says we're going to go up to 15. Let's grab at the 11 while we can.
Anything else? Good.
Dean, I'm going to miss your analogies. I love them. Every time. I look forward to it. Every time you...Iron in the state, count on it. Yes, I still agree with the 11.
Me, too.
Truly. I just do.
All right.
We might not get this opportunity again.
Proposal out there.
Your amendment first.
Right, 10. The amendment of 10. All those in favor of changing as amended to 10, raise your hand.
Join the Nick Olburn Club, if you remember him proposing.
That fails eight to one, one to eight. So go to the referral as read. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? That passes nine to zero to zero. Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. Pleasure working with you.
And all of you, too, as I said last time. I was surprised to working with all of you. I was a new finance director, and you all helped me, as much as I hope I helped you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go to 2017-0248. Deb, you?
Resolution to authorize animal control officer and her assistants to charge certain fees be resolved by the Town Council of the Town of Groton. That in addition to fees and costs, the amounts of which are set by the Connecticut General Statute, the Town of Groton Animal Control Officer and her assistants may impose fees and recover costs as follows. A. Redemption fee, 15 per day per animal. Storage fee, 15 days per animal or 25 per day per animal if the animal is a horse or large livestock. C. Quarantine fee, same as B. Newspaper ad fee, $25 to be collected only from animal's owner upon his or her reclaiming the animal. E. Owner sign-over fee of $50 per animal. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Diane, you take 0249.
Sure. Authorization for police department to collect fingerprints and fees. Resolution to authorize the police department to collect fingerprints of persons who neither work nor reside within the Town of Groton and to authorize the chief to establish a fee. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Groton that A. The employees of the Town of Groton Police Department expressly authorized to do so by the chief of police may collect fingerprints of persons who neither work nor reside in the Town of Groton. In the same manner, employees of the Town of Groton Police Department collect fingerprints of persons who do work and/or reside in the town pursuant to the Connecticut General Statute 29-17C. B. The chief of police department may establish a fee to be charged for a collection of fingerprints of persons who neither work nor reside in the Town of Groton. Said fee shall in no case be less than the fee charged by the police department for the collection of fingerprints of persons who reside in or work in the town, but may be in a greater amount sufficient in the judgment of the chief of police to reasonably compensate the police department for the cost of providing these services to persons who do not reside...Somebody forgot the T in that. And/or work in town. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Karen, can you do it on page 7, 0251?
Sure. 2017-0251, Resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for National Parks and Recreation Training Grant to provide instructor training for an evidence-based Fit and Strong program. Whereas, the senior center would like to apply for grant funds in the amount of $800 from the National Parks and Recreation Association Instructor Training Program. And whereas, funding would be used to provide instructor training for a senior center staff member so that the senior center can offer a Fit and Strong program. And whereas, the Fit and Strong program goal is to promote an increase in exercise to continue participant independence. Now therefore be it resolved that the town manager or his designate is authorized to apply for a National Parks and Recreation Training Grant in the amount of $800 to support programs at the Groton Senior Center. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Harry, you wanted all the reappointments together?
Yes, reappointments. Good.
Interappointments?
Yeah, well, maybe we ought to do the appointments separately.
Okay.
This is a resolution reappointing Laurel Butler to the Library Board, a resolution reappointing Anne Sloan Rankin to the Harbor Management Commission, and a resolution reappointing Charles Stevens to the Board of Assessments and Appeals. I'd like to move all three as a group for reappointment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero.
Okay. A resolution appointing Jean-Claude Amois as an alternate member of the Shellfish Commission.
Second.
Oh, wait, no, no, I'm not. I have a question. I'll come back to it. Resolved, hereby appointed alternate member of the Shellfish Commission, term ending 12/31/22. I so move. I can say second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion?
Yeah, I thought there was a regular member, Betsy. That was in our packet last month. And that's what I read in my minutes here.
That's what I thought, too. That's exactly what I thought, too. Well, the thing is, I think that the manager's office might have thought that it should have been an alternate, but there wasn't an alternate position available. Oh, yeah, there was. There's one alternate and one regular. Wilson resigned.
Intent was definitely the committee to do with the regular member.
Oh, to make the alternate a regular member.
To make Jean-Claude a regular member, for him to take the regular member spot.
Isn't that right? Yeah.
So what are we doing here? We appoint or...
You should amend the resolution.
Okay, I will...
Fix it.
I will draw my motion. Deb, you?
Withdraw my second.
Okay, so this is a resolution appointing Jean-Claude Amois as a member of the Shellfish Commission. Resolved that Jean-Claude Amois, 1691, across the Parkway, is hereby appointed as a regular member to the Shellfish Commission for the term ending 12/31/22. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Bonnie?
Are there current alternate members on the commission?
Yeah, there are.
Because they should probably move up.
Well, you know, the thing is, I've talked with the...And so has Mr. Counselor Watson. The commission is wanting young people as members. And so even though there's alternates that have been alternates for quite some time, all but one, well, I won't say that, but they want the younger people to be put into the regular position. So the next regular position, they're going to put another younger person in there.
Yeah. By J.C. joining the Shellfish Commission, I think he brings...No, nothing intended here, but I think he brings the average age of the Shellfish Commission down at least 10 years.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
He's sitting back there, too.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
It was the commission's. They want him to...
Okay, all right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Dean, how about our last one for the...
Move it slowly.
He does nothing.
You want me to do the whole Zootopia thing here?
No. My knee's going to fall off, so.
2017-0274, Resolution authorizing the town's insurer to settle an action. Resolved that the Town of Groton does hereby provide its consent to the town's insurer, tried in public risk, settle the action entitled Asia Porter versus Richard Carlson et al., docket number 3, colon, 16CB01024. As recommended by defense counsel in that action, I so move.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Dean?
I should have said something earlier, and I'm slow on the uptake. And anybody else want to follow my lead? Thank you very much, folks, for supporting me all this time. I don't know what I'll be doing. If I'm dumb, I'll be back. And thank you all. Thank you all for a very wonderful experience. Thank you.
I think the final thing is best of luck to the incoming council.
Yes.
Best of luck.
All right.
I'd like to say, best of luck, because if you succeed, Groton succeeds.
We have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.